All right. Thank you all for coming out. Good to see a good number of people out there today. Appreciate it. Debra, if you can please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Albritton?
Present.
Councilmember Hartman?
Absent.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Here.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
Mayor, could we have a motion to...
A second.
Oh, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I was just gonna ask if we have a motion to excuse Bob.
Please.
He's not feeling well.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, if you please call the roll.
To excuse Councilmember Hartman. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. The next item is public comment, and we have a couple of special items coming up. We're fortunate to have former Mayor McKay here this evening and some other individuals. Councilmember... Well, come on up, Doug. Dee Schroder and also Gay Chapels. Good evening.
Hi.
Mike Swann.
No. No, it's not on.
I'm gonna let Gay do most of the talking, but we'll all pitch in here shortly, so. Go ahead, Gay.
Okay. This... Huh? On behalf of the old people? She's just not nice. She hasn't changed. Anyway, this is for Andy. Andy, you've been our councilmem... I mean, our... Yeah, right.
Our savior.
Our savior, actually. You came in here when we were in real chaos, and we were looking for somebody to slew the dragons for us, and you did. You came in and you really pulled it together. And we've had 12 wonderful years of smooth sailing, so to speak. So what we'd like to do as just residents, we'd like to show our appreciation, and we know you're gonna have a lot of time on your hands because I understand your golf is kinda... Iffy?
You weren't taking it out of there?
No, I'm gonna just take them. So, we have some reading material pointed. And what it is is, one of them is a book. This book is a man and his watch. And it's everybody through history who has had a watch for one reason or another, from astronauts to just regular people to very famous people. So, we got you an 1886 watch. The... I'm a little old now, so we left the keychain at the house, but you...
I got my gold watch.
There you go.
And it opens up...
You have to open the bat wings and read the engraving.
No, it opens up both sides open. Now, if you wanna fight with it, and it's engraved on both sides, the other side comes down too.
Hit it with a hammer. It'll open up.
Yeah.
It says, "Andy, for the 12 years of fantastic time as administrator of Southwest Ranches, Gay, Doug, Dee, and Jim both..."
It's for the time he spent in this town.
Nice.
Now, since you were so busy slaying dragons for us, we bought you King Arthur's book. And we have a sword for you.
Oh.
That's an antique, and it is a real sword.
And it is engraved.
And it's called a ceremonial sword of the knights, and I can't say the word. Thank you. And that's the history of it. And the reason...
I'm gonna have security up there to... Andy's gonna throw me out.
What's so good about this sword is that it's lighter, and it was really used, and it's very thin, and they intentionally killed with it. It wasn't fun and games. That's it. So I just wanna thank you so much. And while you're not doing anything and you're bored, you can read or you can go out and slay a few dragons.
Do you have a little homework?
Just a little.
Okay. Go ahead. Hold on. He's getting my dad in here. A short meeting?
Yeah.
Well, when you realize that you have all this time on your hand and you're reading and you realize...
When you're reading.
And you realize why you left and why you retired, I want you to think of me.
Oh, I knew.
Drive me to drink. Absolutely.
Okay. It's okay by me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all for doing that. That's fantastic. All right. The Seeks... What do we... Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it's okay. The Seek Youth Association, someone wants to speak.
Oh, okay. For the 5K.
They just put it as a general.
Okay.
Hello, how is everyone this evening?
Doing well, thank you.
We'd like to talk of our 5K, the 5K for Run/Walk for Unity and Diversity. Get ready for the Sixth Annual Unity and Diversity 5K Run/Walk. The event will take place on March 9th, 2024, at the Rolling Oaks Park in Southwest Ranches. The goal of this event is to empower the youth to become active members in their communities as well as to foster an understanding of people from all walks of life. The proceeds from the 5K Run/Walk will go to benefit the Town of Southwest Ranches College Scholarship Fund, which provides financial aid to students entering college. We encourage everyone to invite their family and friends to support this cause, all while promoting a healthy and active lifestyle. The event will have delicious ethnic cuisines, interactive booths... and interactive booths. In past years, we have received tremendous support from the town, so thank you. Our mission of unity and diversity has grown each year with annual attendance of 1,000 people and over $10,000 raised per year for the College Scholarship Fund. We want to make this year's event even bigger and better, and we need your help. Today, more than ever, it's important that we show that there's more that brings us together than what drives us apart, and we want you to be part of our mission. Register is now open, and you can scan the QR code on the flyer. Please let us know if you have any questions. So don't forget to join us on March 9th, and make sure to let your friends and family know to come for a fun-filled day. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all very much.
Richard Remcharter, and final speaker will be John Garotti.
Do I need to mention my name again? Oh, okay. You know, it's raining heavily out there, and the roads are not that safe, but I felt compelled to come here tonight, not to speak on behalf of Broward Clean Air, but to speak for myself. And firstly, I would like to say that Andy... He's not here. But... Oh, yeah. I'd like to say that Andy, you have been an inspiration to me. I never told you that, but I'm gonna miss you very much. I think that you were a great leader here in the town, and I wish you the very best in the future, and I hope that you'll stay in touch. For our councilmembers, Mayor Bright Cruz, Councilmember Albritton Kozinski, and Jablonsky, I just wanna say that I truly believe that you guys are doing a very good job. You are working as best you can to help our community, and I think it's important for the entire town to know that. So I... Russell, I think you're gonna be a great administrator, and I look forward to working with you on zero waste and composting, et cetera. And Keith, thank you for being our town attorney and doing the great job that you're doing. I'd like to say that please have our backs with this incinerator issue. We need to save our towns' air, water, and lands. We don't want municipal city water coming into Southwest Ranches. So with that, I would like to say to the people of Town of Southwest Ranches, I wanna wish everyone a very happy holiday. I know that this is our last meeting for the year, and I look forward to seeing everyone in the following year. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
John, you're up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. John Garotti, 162nd Avenue. I just have a question. Is there be public speaking regarding the ordinances, or is it just this?
No.
So I can speak again?
Yes, you can.
Wonderful.
On that topic.
Andy, great. I'm just gonna thank Andy. Andy, it was a pleasure working with you. It wasn't too, too long. We've argued a little bit, but it was always constructive. And Russell, I look forward to working with you, 'cause I'm not going anywhere, but I'm getting a kick out of being up here, and, you know, you've done a good job, Andy, in communicating with me in the latter part. In the beginning, we had a rough moment, but that's why we speak and keep going. But we got Wisconsin in common, so there you go. I'll speak again in my later moments. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. That's it, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Do we have any board reports this evening? Seeing none. Councilmember comments?
I'll go.
All right.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. We've got a lot going on, so I'm gonna be trying to be as brief as possible, just to make a few announcements and let everybody know that Town Hall is gonna be closed several times this month, the 22nd and the 25th, and the 29th of December, and the 1st of January. So everybody knows that. The Flowmobile will be here on the 27th of December. If you need to use their services, please contact Debra over here at the Town Clerk Office if you need an appointment. I noticed... Steve, maybe you can answer this question. I noticed on the town calendar that the farmer's market is not on for the 23rd and 30th. Is there... Am I correct in that?
I'm not aware of a break in...
It's blank. It's blank on that.
I think that's an error with the calendar itself.
Okay. We'll address that.
But thanks for bringing that up, so we'll make that correction.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any break in the schedule there.
If I had the calendar in front of me, I had a newsletter, which I don't have. Anyway, it just shows blank, and I didn't know if they were in preparation for the carnival or...
No.
No, okay. So apparently, it's probably still going on. It was just a misprint. Okay. We have hazmat at the barn on the 6th of January. They're going to be doing all the electronics, paint, fluorescent bulbs, tires. You know, you drive through, it's easy. There's gonna be shredding there. You're allowed up to, I think, four banker boxes per household, and they also have a drug prescription drop-off. Davie Police will be there monitoring or taking them all in if you wanna get rid of unused drugs. And let's see where my... Okay. So all that's happening on January 6th, and we do that four times a year. People talk about zero waste. That's one of the main components that we do, is we get rid of the stuff that really pollutes a landfill. It gets handled in a safe manner by the company that we've contracted to do all of that. I'm gonna talk briefly about a... something that I've asked the administration and Davie Police Department to enforce, and they've already taken care of the problem in Rolling Oaks. They took care of it almost a year ago, and I didn't realize how widespread it was throughout the town. And basically, what that deals with is mostly landscaping trucks on single-lane busy roads parking on the lane. And they're there for a couple hours.
Yeah.
And then, and the reason this sticks out is because I got caught in one of the 10th car backups, and then it got to be a... It was at the wrong time of day, and I got caught in it, and it was like playing chicken to get in and out. So I've asked Davie to police as and the administration to that they need to move those off of their blocking traffic and creating a hazard. They need to move those trailers and trucks either onto the swale right-of-way or into their customers' driveway.
Right.
And anybody that tells you that they can't move that in there is nonsense, because they move horse trailers in and out all along there. And I'm talking on the main roads here, 185th, 186th, 188th, 164th, 160... You know, all the side streets have it, and they all have that problem with the landscapers. So I've already spoken to Detective Eddy back there about it. He's put it out to all of his men, and Russell and Andy are prized of the whole thing, so that'll be probably coming up. And it only has to happen... Like I found out in Rolling Oaks, it only had to happen a few times, and then everybody kinda got the message. And everybody stays clear now, 'cause that's, you know, the one-way-in drag, and when it's blocked, it's pretty serious, especially up at the front. So... And I also wanna advise people, if you don't wanna call the police, there's a thing called a Safer App. It's a free application you can put on your cellphone. You can download it from the Android Store or the Apple Store, and it goes directly to the Davie Police Dispatch Desk, and you can stay anonymous on it, and you can put in that you got landscapers across the street, and they're blocking traffic, and the officers will respond accordingly. I cleared that with the Davie Police Department, you know, prior to that. So if you wanted to go that route, the other route is just call the non-emergency number and report it. And of course, the officers, if they see it, they're going to do something about it. That's the main crux behind it. So I wanted to mention all of that. And that's throughout town. That's from east to west, west to east, north to south. The other thing I'd like to thank, George Morris, Wendy, and Jason Halberg, for their time that they served on our boards. They're all taking a break. Some may be a year or two, some may be more than that. That's at their discretion, but I wanna thank them for their sacrifice, time, and their knowledge that they brought to the table. And as I understand it, George is gonna be off of two committees, but he's planning on staying on the park board, the way he explained it to me. But he's gonna become a grandfather here in the next couple of weeks, and I think he wants to, you know, kick back a little bit and maybe not quite retire, but go into like some sort of retirement, or have a few nights free, for lack of a better way of saying it. Bob Hartman, I hope you're listening to this eventually. I hope you feel better. It really... It's really rough when you got the flu, and I sincerely hope you're taking medication, taking care of yourself, you know, for that. And I'll close with, I'd like to wish everybody happy holidays. They're all coming up. Hopefully, you're with family. Hopefully, not everybody's traveling all over the place, 'cause I know traveling is gonna be a mess this year with the pilot shortage that they have and all of that. So... And I'll close with that, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Gary.
Mayor?
Jim?
I'll jump in. First of all, I wanna say Santa did come to town this past week. The Rural Arts Board went around and judged the lights for our Seventh Annual Holiday Lights Contest. There were seven homes. Each one was definitely different from the others. It was really nice. The people that we met, there were, I believe, three new contestants, wonderful people. Just what a great night it was judging. We were out till probably 9:30, 10 o'clock judging. Then the board had the decision to pick the top three. I don't know how they did it, but they picked the top three. And then Thursday night of last week, Santa Claus, along with the fire truck, along with Chief Bennett and the firemen, visited the homes and presented them with the trophies and the signs. I was really thrilled that the neighbors came out with their children and met Santa Claus. Santa Claus was just thrilled to meet them, and it was a great evening. If you would like to know where those homes are, give me a call. I got their addresses written down. Just drive by and see them. We have some talented people in Southwest Ranches when it comes to decorating, so I really wanna thank the board and the town and Susan for all of that. Thank you. Last Friday, Bob Hartman and I took a field trip with the Broward Water Climate Change Board. We went to two places. We went up to a place called Green Kay Wetlands in Boynton Beach. It's a 100-acre site. In 1999, Boynton Beach bought the property. It was a bell pepper farm, and they have turned that into the most magnificent wildlife, wetlands place you can imagine. They have a mile and a half walkway elevated that you can walk around, look at it. They take you through the different stages of how it was developed, and I really was amazed at the amount of water that they moved. It's also a reclamation center where they can take the water from the plants, the sugar mills and stuff, and process it and put it out for crops again. So I was amazed. We then left there and went up to Loxahatchee. We went to the C-51 reservoir up there. That is a massive project. It's 2,000 acres. There's 12 ponds and another one being dug now. Each pond's about five to 10 acres in size, anywhere from 20 to 30 foot deep. Those ponds not only hold water, but I found out they move water. They can take water from those ponds and pump it into our aquifer. I mean, it's just unbelievable that they can replenish the aquifer. They can move it from town to town. They can use it to water crops. So that project up there is an ongoing project, and it was really something to go see. If you get the chance to visit either one of those two, take it. The Broward League of Cities had their meeting in Weston this past week, and the main topic up there is the money from Tallahassee and the United States government that's available for grants. The Broward County leads the whole state in appropriations, and I think Southwest Ranches kinda leads them all. I asked this evening and was told here, and I have the information here, there's $7 million that the town has received in active funds, and there's $2.5 million in applications waiting to be funded. That's through this town right here. So you gotta admit that the Town of Southwest Ranches is going after the money to do the projects, to help pay for those, so that it doesn't come out of your taxpayers' money. The Broward League of Cities would like to ask every town to step up and fight this new bill coming into Tallahassee. It is... It deals with the Airbnbs. It deals with the rentals, and if this goes through, those laws, resolutions, and ordinances we just passed would be null and void. They will cancel those. I know that's hard to understand, how they can come in and cancel your ordinance, but that's what this bill will do. So if you have a chance to look at that and to get on board with it, it's Senate Bill 280 coming up. Just look that up and see. It's not good for us, not good for the community at all. All right? I have a letter from the South Florida Regional Planning Council that says that they are lowering the water in the canals right now. They anticipate this rain to go all weekend. They're lowering the water in the canal, and they've asked the other agencies, like the Central Broward and so forth, to do the same. It says, "At this time, the South Florida Water Management District strongly encourages all secondary local governments," all right, "and 298 special districts to proactively monitor the forecast and the rainfall." So they are looking after us, trying to keep us from flooding. The next thing, I wanna thank Andy. All right? I don't know if people understand, I come... And this is hard for me to say, I come from the construction industry. I was elected in office for 18 straight years, every three years, but to be elected as a public official is a whole different ballgame. I stepped into this not knowing the first thing about a town, how a town was run, the ins and outs, but this gentleman right here took me under his wing, and I'm gonna tell you what, in the past three years, I am absolutely grateful for what he's taught me. All right? I know a little bit more than I did before, and it's only because of Andy that that's possible. Thank you, sir. Mayor, I would like to read something if I could. I know that most people don't appreciate... don't appreciate the people that complain all the time, but there is a complaint that I'd like to share. Let's see if I got it here. Anyhow, it goes something such as this. I read this, and the fellow was saying, "I don't wanna be a Grinch, but I want my neighbors to understand, and please take this under advisement. Don't put out Christmas lights that are red and blue and flash, because every time I come around the corner, I think it's a police officer. So I have to slam on the brakes, I have to buckle my seatbelt, all right? I have to turn the radio down, I have to put the gun under the seat, and that's just too much when you're trying to drive. So please, take that into consideration." So, you know, I feel for the guy. I've probably been through that a few times myself, and I would like to wish everybody a happy holidays, and that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. That's a tough act to follow, David.
Jim, thank you. Yeah, that was very entertaining. Thank you so much. I wanna thank everybody for coming out. We got a great, great audience tonight. Couple things I wanna chit-chat about. I'm gonna begin, Advisory Board openings. Anybody's interested in serving, reach out to Town Hall, get an application. You can reach out to me. I'll send the applications over. I personally have a vacancy coming up on the Rural Arts and Design Advisory Board. That's a really, really fun board. They do a lot of the things for the town, like putting out our Southwest Rancher magazine. They help design the new format. And the calendar, they do the holiday lights. So great, fun group to be with. Also, speaking about the Rural Arts and Design Advisory Board, the calendars are out, and these are going hot. They are very, very popular. The front cover, I have to brag a little bit, I encouraged one of our residents in Sunshine Ranches, Geraldine Miller, pushed her and pushed her to submit a photo, 'cause she said she had some horses. She made the cover, and I was really, really happy for her. She... I brought her a calendar, and she was just all giddy about it. She goes, "My horse is on the cover?" It was great. So, next. We're a town of many religions, and there will be many, many celebrations, and I wanna wish everybody happy holidays. And when it comes... I want to wish everybody happy holidays. And when it comes to the parties, just ask everybody to be a little understanding, because everybody's, this is the festive time of year. Everybody's going to be celebrating, and a little understanding for the neighbors in their celebration would be greatly appreciated. Gary, I like that idea about landscaping trucks. It's a complaint that I get a lot. I get a lot, and I fully much support that great idea. Bob Hartman, get well. Miss you up here. And then, my November Law and Order report. We had, in the month of November, we had 126 traffic citations issued in the town of Southwest Ranches. Beginning with District 1, there were four citations issued. One of those speeding. That was on Griffin. District 2, 11 citations were written. Nine of those 11 were for speeding, and of those nine, five of those were on Griffin. Thank you for the AC coming on. That felt great. I was getting hot here. All right. District 3, 30 citations written. 22 of those were for speeding and four on Griffin. And District 4, always the leader, 81 citations issued, 71 speeding. Of those 71, 44 were on Griffin, and the remainder on the interior roads. I applaud Davie Police for enforcing our speed, because that is my number one complaint. When I get phone calls, text messages, "David, we need speeding controls. Can you send out Davie Police?" I really, really much thank Davie Police for that. Lastly, last night, we had the Zero Waste Board came out and had a great meeting about composting. Now, this is a real important issue to our town. We cannot just oppose the incinerator with no other alternative. That's, doesn't offer a solution. It's just, we don't want it here, and that's not going to fly with the board. We have to present an alternative, and the alternative is more recycling, zero waste. Richard and Debbie have done a lot. I have seen Debbie in many, 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 many events. I've helped her at a few of those. And I'd just like to ask folks, if you're interested in opposing this incinerator, if it really means a lot, that it's like, we don't want this near us at all. Come out and help. Stand out at a stand. We'll give you some papers, and just talk to people. Get people more and more interested. It's, it's really important that we get more volunteers. It's, it's a good cause. It's a very, very good cause for the town. I have been in communication with the mayor of Tamarack to have the next meeting for the Zero Waste in Tamarack next month. Hopefully, I can get a date soon, and that'll be published. And last, Andy, thank you. You taught me a lot. You gave me, gave me a lot of points to consider and helped me be not only a better council member, but a better person. Thank you. That does it.
Great. Thank you, David. All right. I have a few items I wanted to run through as well. One item that I'd like to send to the comp board, and just want the consensus on that, if I could get it, is surrounding the current ordinance that deals with the height of the walls that we have. I think we talked a little bit about this last time. Right now, it's based, it's eight feet from the level of the floor of the house. So, if the house is built up eight feet above grade, and then you do eight feet like that, and you build the wall out in front there, you can have about a 16-foot wall, which I don't think was the intention. So, I'd like to send that to the comp board and have them take a look at that and see if they come back with it.
I'm good with it.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Something I came across that just thought I'd pass on, Florida Treasure Hunt. I don't know if you've all heard of this or not, but if you Google "Florida Treasure Hunt," it is the unclaimed property. It'll take you to the unclaimed properties site for the state of Florida. And so, I came across that, and I typed my name in there, and I've got about $230 coming somewhere between Tallahassee and here. Who knows if I'll ever get it. But I thought I was good, you know? I thought I'd just check it out. But there was like, like I said, there was two items totaling 230 bucks. So, I thought I'd pass it out there, check it out. Florida Treasure Hunt, there's probably some money waiting for you out there that you don't even know about.
Type in my name, and they're going to say, "You owe."
Couple of items that we followed up from previous conversations. Heard that there was a lot of speeding on volunteer road, and so, I appreciate the help of Keith and Andy contacting some of the dealerships there. They both were super responsive and promised to not do their test driving there and to really watch the speeding for those test drives on that road. So, hopefully, that's going to get better. If, if it starts to drift back up again, please let me know, and we will contact them again. Another item that came up recently, especially as we go into this New Year's season, obviously, is the fireworks and the concern for our horses. And I was speaking with one of the horse owners here in town, and, and she brought up the idea of that really, one of the things that we can do, you know, we talked about the tranquilizers and things like that, and the time it takes, you have to do ahead of time to know it's there, and the limited amount of time that it actually lasts, and that it's not, it can help, but it's not the solution. But one of the things she said was the ear, earplugs that the horses can have, and there's different sizes depending on the size of the horse and things like that, but it can make a real difference. And so, I asked Andy to look into that, and he did a great job, and he got with Russell, and, and I think, yeah. What's that?
I said, "I did a great job. I gave it to Russell."
There you go. There you go. There's been a lot of that going on, I hear. So, so what we did was, we went ahead and purchased a sample of these, these earplugs for the horses. And they'll, they're here at Town Hall. They're available at no cost. The only thing we would ask for you is, we want to get your feedback after you use them to see how they worked, see if this is something that makes sense or does not make sense, and then we can pass that on to the horse community, maybe get some more if we need to. But it's one of the few things we can, we can do proactively upfront to try and protect our horses. So, please pass the word around, and we'd like to get as many of these out in the community as possible, so that we get as much feedback back as possible. So, all right. Another, another item, not looking for any decision here tonight. I don't want a decision here tonight, but a topic that I wanted to bring up that I have discussed with Russell, and I want you all to think about it, is, you know, through this whole transition that we've done, we've actually, we're going to, the town is going to save some money, because everyone is moving into new slots, and, and they don't have the experience that the former individual had, so their, their compensation is lower. So, there's, there's a reduction there. However, through this all, we've actually lost a head count. We have one less individual here, and, and I think one of the keys to Andy's success was that he had Russell, and Russell was right there. And Russell was the town clerk, but we know that he did a tremendous amount of work beyond being a town clerk, which was why he became the Assistant Town Administrator. And so, I'm not looking for the new Assistant Town Administrator, but I do think that for Russell to be successful, we need somebody there to take on some of the, and I would leave it to Russell to, to come up with the job description, but the things that come to my mind is that as a town administrator, I don't really want Russell fixing all the IT issues anymore. I think he's got to have a higher visibility than that. You know, there's a lot of things that he's done through the years that, not really town clerk type stuff, but things that need to get done, and Andy leaned on him to get those things done, and it allowed Andy to be successful at, at a higher level. And so, I believe that if Russell is going to be successful, we're going to need to fill that, fill that position. Keep in mind, this is not a new slot. This is actually a head count that is currently open right now. So, like I say, I'm not looking for you to make a decision tonight, but I see, go ahead.
I have a comment.
Please.
Russell, Russell and I had, had the very same conversation
Good.
last week.
Good.
Was it last, was it last week? Yeah. And he, you know, we were tossing ideas all over the place,
Good.
which probably you were too.
Yeah.
He did mention to me that he wanted to wait several months
Yeah.
to get the feel for it before he made a recommendation
Good.
on something like that. But I, I hate to phrase it this way, but I'm kind of in lockstep with what you're saying.
Good.
You know, because I, that was a big concern of mine is
Yeah.
he needs, you know, he needs a backup.
Right.
To do that, or he's got to have, we got to put another room in for, you know, a cot in the kitchen and everything else in the office.
Yeah, you know.
He might not be leaving.
You know, one thing I've learned about Russell is that if it needs to get done, he will get it done. And, and that's an awesome quality, but it would be easy for the town to take advantage of that, and we would not, we would not get what we really want.
Yeah, we, we discussed, we discussed several alternatives that just, you know, we were spitballing.
Yeah.
You know, throwing darts.
Right.
But he, he wanted to time, time in at the position before he made any recommendations to us.
Perfect. Yeah, he mentioned that to me as well. So, that's, that's awesome. So, I would just encourage the other council members that, in your time with Russell, please bring it up with him, and, you know, and in your own, you know, as you think about things, please consider that as a potential item. We might want to pick up a couple of months down the line, two, three months down the line. All right. I just wanted to wish Bob, Bob, please feel better. Miss you not being up here, but, but thank you for not being here, so that we don't all get sick, but we wish you to return to health quickly. And, and I do want to, I do want to wish everybody a happy holidays, and, and really enjoy the time with your family, your friends. This is a special time of year. Just wish everybody to take some time and enjoy it, kind of soak it up, get past all the, all the things you have to do this time of year to get ready for it, and then just relax and enjoy it if you can. So, that's awesome. Andy, thank you for all you've done. I can't, I can't begin to express my thanks to you. You know, we've said all these things before, but I just want you to know that you did walk into a very difficult situation here. It was a revolving door. You brought stability. You brought integrity, and you brought a lot of wisdom and knowledge, and we are a much better town for what you've brought to us. Thank you. And Russell. Russell, thank you. Thank you for being in the wings. Thank you for waiting. Thank you for learning, and we're excited about what the future's going to hold. We really are. Thank you. All right. And with that, I will close my comments. Illegal comments.
The Astronite Parks Foundation did an amazing job at its annual Chili Cookoff and Car Show. For those who attended, I'm sure they will tell us how much they raised in the near future, but it was a fantastic event. Congratulations to Darren Reese, who's Chili won the competition, but it should not be outdone at all by the second-place winner.
Who?
Who might that be?
Who, in the event of the fact that he may not be able to fulfill his duties, would slide right in. So, congratulations to our Vice Mayor for the first time ever entering and coming in second place, and for Russell's honorable mention, but seeing, seeing that the fourth place, okay. Seeing that he was up the whole night before, it, it made sense. So, next year, I'm sure that will be even better things for the two on the councils. So, congratulations to everyone. It really was a great event. A ditto, Mayor, your sentiments about the holidays. I hope everyone has a happy and healthy holiday season and New Year. Andy, you know, just to be brief, they say it's time to retire when you believe that music in the room is too loud, which I think tells everyone here why Items 8 and 9 are on the agenda. So, congratulations again to you on your retirement. I, I've, I've made my thoughts public previously, and, and will once again tell you and thank Melissa for loaning you to us for the last 12 years, because it truly was an honor and privilege to work for you. And although you're temporarily retired, I'm sure it will lead to even better things in your future. So, congratulations. You know, no further comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. All right. Andy?
Mayor, I have some comments.
Your last shot administrative comment.
I'll hold to the end of the meeting on some of that, but two things. One is, the first is a public service announcement. You were talking about the farmer's market. They are taking a hiatus over the holidays. It will resume on January 6th.
Okay.
So, I just want to clarify that. The other is, I just want to thank the members of the public, members of the council for comments you made tonight, members of the public for comments that they made, especially the old people in the back.
Can you hear me, Gay?
You, Doug D., absolutely outdid yourself. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. And I'll, I'll hold my other comments till the end, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, I just have one more quick thing.
Yeah.
Emile caught something, not surprisingly, but that Southern Strategies changed its name to the Southern Group. And although we've been paying Southern Strategies, because the EIN numbers and everything don't match up perfectly, we asked them for a new retainer agreement under their new trade name, which is the Southern Group, and without any objection from the council, it's here for Andy's signature. So, as long as everyone's okay, we will proceed.
Perfect. Yes. Yep. Yep. Well, good. Thank you, Emile. All right. Item number eight.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending Section 9.9-5 of Chapter 9 entitled "Noise" of the town of Southwest Ranches Code of Ordinances to amend the list of exemptions providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the item. Is there any council discussion on this item?
Wait until after public, after comment.
Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
Excuse my ignorance. Is this for the noise ordinance?
This is for...
This is for the noise, right?
Mm-hmm.
Got you. All right. Let me get gathered. I am going to take my three minutes today, because I usually never do, but
Two minutes.
Two, it's two or three?
Two.
Two, so I got a speed read. All right. First of all, John Karate, 162nd Avenue. I have a problem with this change, because we had a workshop that pretty much spoke about the noise ordinance. I didn't see a single person here talking about barking dogs or any domestic animal, whatever that may be, regarding that being such an important topic to now a magistrate finds a ruling that doesn't apply, therefore, we switched it, because even
You're on.
You're fine. You're fine. You're fine.
Can you hear me? Okay. So, it was even confirmed by Mr. Mayor, because I even asked, I said, "Is this because of the Bruno's Happy Dog case in the magistrate hearing?" And it was yes. So, I dug a little further, and I found a couple of things that bothered me. So, Bruno's Happy Dogs is a home-based business. I have a home-based business. There's a couple of things that changed, and I'm no lawyer, Keith, but there's a couple of things that changed in the statutes that I'm going to hand you guys, if you guys don't mind.
I was going to hand you.
Mayor.
I have a few other copies. Page 2 and 3. I have others.
It pretty much states that any ordinance that's going to get passed, there's supposed to be some sort of a impact study regarding if any businesses will be affected. And the lingo is pretty specific. Now, I do want to read something in public comment, and I am going to ask for at least another minute. I'm going to read something from, from the Baez-Prisco family that owns Bruno's Happy Dogs, and it pretty much says, you know, they're operating a boarding daycare facility under full permission of the town, because we did ask for permission, but the operation of Bruno's is consistent with the town's mission statement of preserving our rural lifestyle, which includes donkeys braying, roosters crowing, and no sidewalks. That's kind of like our town motto. And the Baez-Prisco family, which is in the audience, requests that this letter is entered as public comment on the town's proposed amendment to Section 9.5 of Chapter 9. I have more copies, by the way. So, I did want to introduce that. I didn't want to read the entire spiel, because there's a lot of legalities in there, and it was emailed to every councilman last night. I do request that state statutes be followed. Give me the impact statement. My business will be affected. Let me tell you why. We don't want to bother people as a business in this town, but what I want is clarity. Our noise ordinance has no parameters. I, the wall speak. Everybody knows, you guys talked about it. You did a workshop. You guys bought noise meters. They're sitting in a I, the wall speak. Everybody knows, you guys talked about it, you did a workshop, you guys bought noise meters, they're sitting in a drawer. There's been no clarity on how we can get, how do you pull up to a property as a code officer and you have a fence, dogs barking? How long is that barking necessary to become an ordinance of, I'm sorry, a violation? How, how annoying does it need to be? Is there a time? Is there, is there a decibel level? So that unclarity to me bothers me. Just give me 30 seconds and I'll be quiet. Um, I'm just asking for due process. I'm asking for this to be read. I'm asking for this not to be passed tonight until, you know, tell me, hey, you know, I'd love your interpretation, but you're wrong. Or we did do the impact study and it's on the website. I just want the Baez-Prisco family to have what I've had for 22 years is a lot of peace and quiet, except for the issues I have with the town. So, you know what? It's my duty to speak, and any resident that needs anything, I'll do it for them, and I'll speak because I don't see due process happening here. We're not here to bother people. We're here to live in a town. We don't have a maximum amount of dogs. So how is this enforceable? That's kinda my point, but the letter from what I presented to the mayor, I have more copies, I'll give it to each and every one of you. That's basically what I wanted to say tonight. Thanks for the extra time.
Thank you.
Is that on? Yeah, it's on. Is the mic on, Gay?
It's on, but you just need to speak into it.
We turned it down. We turned the master down, but we turned, just turned it up.
Maybe not.
Yeah, maybe. Dan's gonna check it.
Just wait one second. She's down to 30 seconds.
We have another one here if you need. Dan, if you need another one.
Thank you, I think. Okay. I used to have a boarding kennel. I still have my kennel license. I've been here over 60 years. You graciously removed it from my A2 zoning, and so I don't have a kennel anymore, but I do have some big dogs. I have livestock on my property. Those big dogs bark if you blink. So am I gonna have the cops on my door every time those dogs bark because I'm on the corner of Dykes and Sterling? And I can tell you, there's a lot of people back and forth, and my dogs catch 'em all the time. Across the street from me is the Sikh temple, and they're up late at night sometimes. My dogs are barking. So, you know, I, I just don't understand your mentality. I really don't. You, you campaigned on keep us rural. People out here have dogs. They might have multiple dogs. And dogs bark. They bark when there's noises. They bark when there's people outside. They bark just 'cause they wanna bark. So are you gonna have code banging on everybody's door because somebody in the neighborhood heard a dog bark and they're complaining? I think you really need to think about this law. You know, if you're using the law to go after one person, you don't need the law. 'Cause there are other ways to get at that person other than by creating a law that's gonna put a big burden unnecessarily on the masses and not just one person. I have a feeling this was designed because there was an unhappy person who wanted to get at somebody. And so they pushed to have this created so there would be a noise ordinance. And it's specifically on barking dogs. Now, I will tell you that I am across the street from that area where they have the dogs. I never hear those dogs. I do hear the neighbor's dogs bark, and my dogs on that property bark when I'm sending them after coyotes. And we sent them after a coyote that was twice their size, by the way, the other day, and he got a calf. The wo- the coyote got the calf. The thing is that those are working dogs, and they are barking, and they are out there, and they are doing their job. So when somebody calls, now what are you gonna do? Come and tell me I gotta put my muzzle on my dog, or I'm gonna be fine because he's barking? You're on soft ground. You really are. I think you need to take a hard look at this. If you're doing this to get after somebody particularly, find another way to do it.
Thank you, Gay.
You're taking away our freedom. You're taking away our rights. We all live next to dogs and cats and screaming donkeys. You guys can't even get rid of the coyotes. You can ask Andy. Broad daylight now. They've got some cojones, these dogs. And I wanna tell you something. I've got lead ready and waiting, and they need to be extinct. They do not need to be around here with all the animals. The kids had a really nice little white cat, little white Siamese. It was a meal. Not much of a meal for that big boy, but it was a meal. The people down the street lost all their cats. This big dog that I'm talking about was running on Kathy Cox's property in broad daylight. I have the pictures, Andy. I can give them to you or Russell, whoever. But you wanna take our rights away as far as our animals and set a noise ordinance. Is this noise ordinance for music playing at night? Because if it's that, you need to say so. If it is for one particular person who's upset about this, I say move her ass outta here. Get her out! Yay! I mean, let's call it like it is, because I'll tell you something. If that person was standing here in front of me, I'd ream her, and she wouldn't like it. She didn't wanna stay where she was. She wanted to come here and have freedom and rights and everything else. Well, mine are being taken away, and I don't like it. And there shouldn't be ordinance against dogs or mules screaming at night. You know why the mules scream at night? Because they're protecting the herd, because the coyotes are there. Live next to a horse farm with 20-some horses. How's that for noise? So get rid of the coyotes. Get rid of the complainer. Get her out. And problem solved. You don't have to sit here and waste your time to come up with all the specifics and what it is. How it works, who's involved, what it's designed for. We don't even know what it's designed for. We all have an idea, though. It's about dogs. Who out here doesn't have a dog or didn't own a dog at one time? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Any other public comment?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Valentina Ayes. I reside at 6540 Melaluka Road. I'm Bruno Happy Dog's owner. And I'm really upset about everything that has been going on. I believe it's not for us. And actually, I sent you an email, and I didn't get a response. Did you get it? It was a couple of days ago. So I don't really like what's going on. Everything has been really, really unfair. There is many dogs business around, and they wanna apply laws to us that they are taking out of nowhere. So I really want an answer of what we need to do to get this done as soon as possible. 'Cause for everyone, it's gonna be a nice Christmas and nice holiday, but not for us. So please, thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. I'll make a couple of comments, and I think, well, I'll make a couple of comments. So, um, the, you know, you mentioned a lot of other animals, other types of animals, uh, that's not part of what's, this is specifically for dogs that was taken out of the excluded zone. So, um, I, my understanding is, and Keith, I'm kinda looking towards you for your confirmation or correction on this, either one. Just wanna get to the, the facts, and that is that I don't, this would not apply to a, a normal barking dog. This is basically when it's a continuous barking over an extended period of time. And so, so how do we, how do we get that to be clear in the ordinance? Because it is, there is, there is some valid points there that it's, none of us up here, I think I can comfortably say this, none of us up here have the intention of in any way infringing upon a, a dog owner that has, has two or three dogs, or one dog, or two dogs, or three dogs. It's, it's when there is a whole kennel of dogs where the, the barking never stops or rarely stops.
So, uh, what you're talking about, Mayor, is actually a different ordinance. That ordinance that defines that is our nuisance ordinance. So what was happening was, uh, a resident in Rolling Oaks, it had nothing to do actually with.
Yeah, and this is, yeah, that's a good one. This is all over town. This is not directed towards one particular.
But we had an issue in, in Rolling Oaks with, uh, incessant dog barking.
Right.
At a particular property that yielded, uh, a tremendous amount of complaints. The property owner was cited under nuisance or would be cited under nuisance, and then they would respond, well, under this ordinance, uh, barking cannot be considered a nuisance and therefore we're exempt. So we're taking it out of this section.
Right.
So that the nuisance ordinance that you have, which is not on the agenda today, it's not, you're here, but that that ordinance can be enacted the way that it was intended. And that is, and Julio's here and can speak to it, is, uh, when it constitutes a, a nuisance to the community, which, you know, is a defined term in the code and one that's reviewed by the magistrate.
Do we, do we need to do those two in tandem? I mean, if we do this now, are we leaving a gap there?
No, that ordinance is correct. That ordinance says that incessant bark, incessant noise, it doesn't say barking.
Right.
But incessant, uh, I mean, Julio, you, you might have the code in front of you. I don't have it here right now. But, but it speaks, the nuisance ordinance states specifically what defines a, a nuisance. Um, and it just gets rid of this as an exemption from that.
Right.
That ordinance is not changing, which is why it's not before you know it.
Thank you.
So, so Keith, um, if, I have three dogs, and if they're barking at the Amazon driver, it doesn't bother them at all, does it?
That's not a nuisance.
All right.
Okay. The, the nuisance in the cases that the town sees are the ones that start at 8:00 PM and goes till 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM. The dogs are left outside, and all you hear is non-stop barking.
All right, any other comments on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item number 12, uh, number nine, please.
I know, this is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 35, Conditional Uses, Section 035-080, Indoor and Outdoor Assembly in Rural and Agricultural Districts to amend the list of exemptions providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have, uh, two things on this one. First, just as a reminder to the council, this was approved on first reading. This is the ordinance that finally does not require town residents to get permits, uh, when they're having a run-of-the-mill party at their house without amplified noise. So the practice, if this is adopted tonight, of requiring a permit if someone has a child's birthday party goes away. You all are getting rid of those requirements. I, a, uh, Scrivener's error was found in this ordinance and was alerted to me by, uh, both councilmember Albritton and yourself, Mayor. And that is in section three of, uh, the, uh, of, um, D, which is on page two. It says section three. It actually had, um, the time hours of going to 11:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday and 8:00 PM on Friday. Uh, that was intended to be Thursday through Sunday, or Sunday through Thursday would be 8:00 PM. And then, uh, Friday and Saturday would be 11:00 PM.
Right.
So if you do adopt this tonight, um, if you could please include that Scrivener's error, it would be appreciated.
Very good. Do I have a motion on this item?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, with the stipulations that Keith just mentioned.
I'll second, I'll second with the stipulation.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on this. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Uh, just, just, uh, clarification through the attorney. Um, this is granting, I guess, more or less more freedoms for our residents?
It, it now gives them the ability to have amplified noise, which they really didn't have before, and it also prevents them from having to get a permit from a run-of-the-mill party.
All right, thank you.
So Friday is now Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
They're just Friday and Saturday.
Uh, Friday, Saturday, okay. And the other one is, uh, Sunday?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this item?
Good evening. John Guarati, 162nd Avenue. Now the mic is good. Um, I got a question. It said, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it said agricultural properties still have to abide by the permitting process that we're changing. So it gives certain freedoms to residents that don't need a, let's say, a permit for a small little birthday party, where, where the old rule was a little unclear. So my question is, for anybody that has an agricultural, and I don't have this, I wish I did, 'cause I pay a lot of taxes, but anybody that has an agricultural business, an agritourism deal. Say you have whatever farm that is an agricultural nursery slash whatever, these new laws, 'cause there's a lot of new laws out there that are unique, and I get it, it's not easy. How does that affect them? Where's the clarity where they now would have to ask for a permit when state law says they don't have to? So I want clarification on that, just in case I ever do buy, hit the lottery and buy a 10-acre piece and put a nursery on it and have an event. There's many nurseries that have, I think there's one that's called Mango Farms. They have a beautiful mango farm, and they do parties, and now I think they have to ask permission when they never had to before? I just want some clarity on that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Keith, can you speak to that?
As it relates to noise, the agritourism statute's clear that, uh, they're treated the same as everyone else.
All right, any further council comment on this item? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, item number 10, please. Do we wanna do these separately, or can we do these all? This is more ministerial, I think.
Well, we're gonna have some.
We don't.
The appointments could be made.
The appointments can be sep- all right, we'll, we'll do it individually, just to be, so everybody's clear.
Give me one second. Okay, item number 10 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending the term of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board, restating the board's scope, authorizing town council members to administratively appoint board members and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve with, eh, an amendment.
Go ahead.
And, and my amendment is that, um, we go back to the original five members on the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board.
How many do we have now?
It's six right now. There's supposed to be seven, but there was one person that wasn't there.
I have a candidate that wants to serve on that board.
There, there's two vacancies coming up.
Is the number of members part of the ordinance we're passing? I don't think so, right?
No.
So I think we can, we can take action on this, and then we can just talk about how many members we want.
Okay, all right, then, and I'll just withdraw that part of the motion, just make a motion to approve.
And, and in fact, Mayor, where you're correct, you all changed your rules on, on how it relates to boards, I think, probably three, four years ago. You're correct, if you want to extend all of these boards, these are just extension, uh, motions. And at some point at a public meeting, you're required to state who your appointment is.
Right.
So if it is the desire to the council to extend all the boards from 10 through, what is it, 12?
15, 15.
15. You can just, uh, make a motion to extend boards 10 through 15 and, and be done. And announce your, uh, nominations at a, either tonight or another night.
Yeah, when we know them. Well, let's do this one separately, since we've already read it into the, the record, and then maybe we'll do the rest together.
As it stands right now, I'm looking at the, uh, population of this board. There's four members.
Okay.
Okay, two are gone.
Oh, okay.
I have a candidate that wants to serve on that. Her name is Renee Green.
Oh, perfect.
If you know who she is?
I do, yeah.
Okay, she lives at 195th.
Perfect.
And I, and I, obviously, I have one of the, one of the losses. Uh, Georgia Morris was my, and I think she would, I spoke to her. She seems to be, uh, have a really good background and, uh, had. She seems to be, have a really good background, and had a wonderful conversation with her earlier today.
Great.
And she's, she would love to be on the board.
Awesome.
I think she'd be great.
Do we have a second on this motion, by the way?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Ta-da.
Well, that's awesome. I also got a note from Renee and was excited that she was interested. I didn't realize there was a, an opening on the comp board, I probably should have, but I didn't realize it at the time, so.
Well, we've got, we've got several boards.
Yeah, yeah, I knew some others.
Where people have dropped out. But she, she seemed extremely well-versed in the nuances of committees and how to get things done, and she had quite a history, a resume that she was reading off to me.
She's been very active in the town for a long time, so that's exciting.
And she's right now working with the, I believe she's one of the organizers of the women's group.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, so she's, she's involved, she's been a resident over 30 years.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I highly, I highly recommend that we put her on there and give her, give her a chance.
I would definitely support that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so let's, before we get there, though, let's, any discussion on this item? From the council, I think we're good. Any public discussion on this item? Seeing none. What we're talking about, the item that's on the table is a resolution to renew the Comprehensive Planning Board, not to, not anything about who's gonna be on the board, just whether we would renew it for another year, and there's a motion to renew this for another year. That's what's on the table. Is there any public comment on that item? Seeing none. Public comment is closed. Please call the roll on the item.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
And Mayor, you're correct, these are just items to extend, you know, Noel, that's all, these are extension. Item 11 is the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board, 12 is the Fire Advisory Board, 13 is the Forestry Board, 14 is the Rural Arts Board, and 15 is the School Advisory Board.
Thank you.
I think a motion, we approve all of those, extend all of those.
Perfect. Do we actually have to read those into the record, or are we good?
You're good.
We're good. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to extend all those through the calendar year 2024. Is there any discussion on that item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on that item? Those items. Seeing none. If we please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 16.
Mayor, I do have one quick question, but if you move on, if you would, please. The Safety and Traffic Board, it was a temporary board for a short period of time. Do we have to approve that? It'll only meet maybe three times this next year, a very short period of time, to incorporate any new things and to find out what's been done. Would we need to approve that now?
I think we definitely need to vote on it.
You, the, the resolution will have to come back at the January agenda.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And there may be another one coming forth at that time as well.
So how do we, how do we populate the--
So, yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, let's go back to that for a second. So my understanding is then at any point in time, like you could do it right now, which I think you're prepared to do--
Correct.
You could propose, you could say, this is, this is who my appointment is.
Correct.
And it's your, you know, in this, in this situation, this is your appointment, so you would just be informing the council that this is your appointment.
You guys are informed.
Alright, thank you, thank you, and welcome, Renee. Looking forward to it. Now, if it's one of the, the members that goes beyond the five, then we need to get a consensus on that. But this is your choice.
Yeah.
Alright. While we're there, is anybody else, I know I'm looking for a member to the Education Board. I've talked to Kathy about that, I think she's got some ideas, so we're working on that, but I'm not prepared at this point to bring forth a member, but is there any, any other board members that we're ready to bring forth at this time?
The only place I have a vacancy is on Rural Arts.
Okay.
Then I do have a question. If there is a vacancy, would you take somebody that has been on the board at large and move them into a spot, or would you leave them at large?
I think if you're, if you're, you know, comfortable you really want this person on there, I would move them to your selection.
If it's not my selection?
Oh, well, that's up to whatever the council member to make that choice.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're looking at, I'm looking at the Drainage Board right now, and the only person that I know of that's not coming back is George.
Right.
And he's at large.
Oh, okay.
So that kind of, it's almost like self-curing.
Yeah, you know, we've, we've, we've had this discussion in the past, I'll just, because we're talking about these things, I'll bring it up again. For a while there, we were very particular that it had to be an odd number. I, I can tell you, I'm not--
That's not an--
It doesn't matter to me.
To me, it's not a deal.
I just want the right people on there, whether it's an odd number or even number. Frankly, if a vote comes down to three versus three, or four versus four, we probably shouldn't be taking action on it anyway. So, so I'm, I'm fine with that. So I just, I just want people on there that are gonna be, you know, interested in those topics and motivated to be there and get the work done.
And the Education Advisory Board, is there an absence coming up?
Yeah, we've had somebody drop off that board. Paige is not able to continue, so.
Okay, but I think they have the at-large people on that board.
It's, you know, it was, she was my appointment, so I just want to have, you know, some confirmation of what's going on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor, the at-large people aren't appointed by any particular person?
It's a consensus of the council.
Exactly right. So is, so the council member who's, has an opening, would consider taking one of them? Is that what--
We have done that in the past, I think it's a good idea.
Alright, I got you. Thank you.
Alright, great. Okay, so I think we're good there. Item number 16, please.
Okay, Mayor, this, this particular item gives me great pleasure to read into the record. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the town administrator's selection of Deborah Rezga, CMC, as the town clerk of the town of Southwest Ranches, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into a contract with Deborah Rezga, which establishes the scope, compensation, and benefits for the town clerk's services and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We'll have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? I got a little discussion. Deborah, congratulations. This is, you know, you, you've done an outstanding job here. This is not something that's been given to you, this is something you've earned. And we're proud of you, we're proud of how you've, you know, through further education and just learning under Russell's guidance, really learned and grown into this position. And I'm thrilled that you're taking it, I'm thrilled to have you here, and, and we will be a better town for what you bring to our town, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Mayor, I hear it's in spite of Russell.
Oh.
That you did it.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. Who wants to call the roll on this item?
May I say something?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
I do want to thank you. I want to thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all your council members, you have, for your confidence in, in my ability to fill Russell's shoes. Your kindness and support mean the world to me, and I will strive to maintain the integrity of the town clerk's office. Keith, I want to thank you for your help and your sense of humor. I also want to thank my mentor and friend, Russell Muniz, for providing me the opportunity to be where I am today. You have encouraged me every step of the way, and it has pushed me to always want to do better. And Andy, well, you're the most amazing town administrator I have ever worked for, except for Russell. Thank you for being you. I want to thank you all.
Thank you, Deborah.
Don't get all mushy on us.
Who's calling the roll here?
I'll do that.
Alright.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman? Excuse me. Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Absolutely. Welcome.
Motion passes.
You know, I just think, we've said it before, but I think this is a real testament to the administration that Andy has built, that all these people can just walk right into the next position. Nobody here is afraid and kind of hoarding all their knowledge and information, they share it to develop those people that are around them, so that moments like this can happen. This is very rare, especially, it's rare in any organization, but especially in a municipal environment, this is very rare. This is a special moment, so thank you, thank you. Alright. Item number 17 is a discussion on the creation of Zero Waste Advisory Board. Want to thank Debbie for her recommendation on this, and, and Richard, you know, whenever we talk about something like this, I always have to plug in, Richard, you're doing an amazing job. Thank you for all you're doing as well.
This is, I wanted to add this to the agenda, yeah.
Yeah. You want to, want to take it away?
No, I just, it was just basically that this was an item that, when Debbie mentioned it, I said, Andy, I want to talk about this, and initially it was like council member comments, I was like, no, I really want an agenda item to make it a forced discussion issue. So based upon the issues that Debbie had raised, I thought it's something very important for the town, and I had asked for the councils just being on board with this.
Thank you for doing that, David. And I want to be clear that this, this is, this board is not another version of, you know, discussing the incinerator and things like that. This board is about zero waste and doing what's best for our community, our town, going forward, regardless of whatever else happens out there in the world of Broward County waste decisions and master plans and ILAs and all that. At the end of the day, I think what we've learned over the last six months is that the world is changing and people are ready to do this, and we will be a better place, we will be a better community if we pick this up and we make it our own, and regardless of what happens out there, if we, if we make this happen in our community. So I'm super thankful to our residents that are just all over this and are thinking, are ahead of the council and showing us what we need to do next, so thank you. I'm super excited about this board.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you, David, for bringing it up here. Really appreciate your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item?
Yeah, Mayor, if you would?
Yeah.
I, I do have one question, and I sat through an ethic class here recently. Will this violate any of the ethic codes that are currently there? I know that some of them are very strict, some are so nitpicky, will this violate any of that?
Well, I will say this, that certainly once this board is, well, let me ask you this. So, so Keith, maybe you can speak to this, whether this is a recommendation or whether it's just discussion and kind of the rules around that.
Well, the way that it's constituted on the agenda would be an advisory board. So at that point, they are fully governed by the regulations of a quasi-government body, which means that Debbie and Richard will no longer be sitting next to each other at council meetings.
Yeah, and I don't think we want that. I think what we want is, is that strict adherence to, that there's no recommendations coming out of here, it's just a discussion or fact-finding.
Total different type of board, so it wouldn't be an advisory board at that point. So that would be just a fact-finding board, you would have to change the name, and when it comes before you, we will have to be very careful to constitute its purpose.
So can you talk to us a little bit, because I think, we have not had a board like this, and I want to, you know, I know kind of in theory how it's supposed to work, but have you seen this worked practically, you know, in a practical way in some other organ, in some other municipalities?
I have, but I don't know if, if this issue on zero waste, and I know the incinerator is an ancillary part of zero waste, although important, I don't know if that sort of board would be appropriate here, because our residents are opinionated, and they do like to tell the recommendation of what they believe the town should be doing. So if it is just a fact-finding board, which you can create under the Florida statutes, their sole goal is to tell you this is what is transpiring, and that is it. They can just tell you what the facts are.
Yeah.
An advisory board can say, this is what is transpiring, and this is what we're recommending to you that the town should do, or this is the position that we believe that we should take.
So I'm gonna open this up, I want to hear what those folks have to say as well, but before we get there, it sounds to me like we would be going beyond a fact-finding. We would want this group to make recommendations on how we would do composting, how we would do different types of recycling and things like that. So given that, I'm wondering, is it better for this to be more, almost, it wouldn't be an HOA, but kind of an HOA type of a thing where the residents themselves form the group, and, and we just provide a place for them to meet, and, yeah.
If it is a civic group, which there are now, but I think they may be looking for more than that, but if it is a civic group, they are not bound by any of the government sunshine's public record laws and the rest.
Right. David, what do you think of that?
I, I'm more inclined to go with it being a recommendation, sending recommendations to us.
You'd rather see it as an advisory board, like all the other boards?
That's kind of what, the way that Debbie was recommending it, and what, in our discussions, what she wanted to do.
I, I get that. I guess I want to--
I have an open mind, I have an open mind.
Yeah, let's, let me, let me open up the, to the floor, and let's see what, see what the thoughts are. Go ahead.
Debbie Green. My, my thought is, this is no different than the Drainage Board, or the, when, when you're looking to what you need to do for swales, and what do we need to do so drainage is in the right way, and when you're looking for that support, and what's out there, and getting that support and bringing it back. So where, this became apparent that the town, if this is our focus, that we want to move in this direction, it, it became apparent to me that we really did need an advisory board to help, to be there, to work in conjunction with, just the same as all the other advisory boards do. There's a whole checklist of all the things you need to go through, like whether, you know, the way we're composting, and how do you reach out to those, and all the different steps that go along the way, as when I was learning through the zero-waste introduction course. So there's a whole step-by-step process, and so by having an advisory board that is working through each of those steps to help in working with, working with the town council to implement the whole, the process of zero, zero waste.
So if we did that, that makes sense. So if we did that, then what the ramification, as it is with any other board, you and Richard would not be able to talk outside of that meeting.
If they're both on the board.
We could not talk outside of that meeting in regards to zero, the, right, the process of how we would be moving forward with zero waste within the town.
If they're both on the board.
You would not be able to speak on any item that could potentially come up within that board.
Just with zero waste in general.
So, so, I'm not, I'm not saying that--
You don't need to both be on, I, I think it's important whether I'm on the, I don't need to, whether you're on that or not, I can participate on, I don't need to be, I--
That's another, that's another great point, you know?
But I do, I do think that, that it, there is a need for an advisory board to help work with Russell and work with the town and all of you to get through the process. There's a lot of steps that need to be done, just like you look to your Drainage Board and the Comp Board and all the other boards for the same exact purpose. This isn't a small little detail of the town. This is solid waste disposal for the town. It's a huge thing, so I would think it would warrant an advisory board.
Gotcha.
I, I just want to mention, aside from the government, the sunshine that you brought up, Richard, just know if this is constituted, all your notes, everything like that is public record. So--
Keith, you're on the board.
Yes.
Come on up, Richard.
Yeah, so I, I would be in favor of having an advisory board as well, but I understand the ramifications of this, and certainly if we have the executive committee meetings that we, we attend, Debbie and I would not be able to collaborate with each other, correct?
Right.
Outside of, yeah. So I mean, it's, it's, this is going to restrict our ability to communicate with each other outside of the board meetings, and I would not be able to share any information with her, and neither her with me, in, in writing as well.
Yes, yes, but hold on, hold on just a second, and this is the point I think David is making. So it would only, that would only be true if both of you were on the board, and I would strongly advise that you not both be on the board.
Right.
So I--
Maybe neither of you would be on the board, maybe you would both be just consulting to help that board out and to be kind of an, an expert-- to help that board out and to be kind of an, an expert on the topic to be part of those meetings, but you're not actually on the board. That's possible.
I would elect to not be on the board because I'm also addressing issues outside of Southwest Ranches. You know, there's Miami-Dade County that we have issues going on with, and I'm forming coalitions with the other environmental groups, I just don't want any, have any conflict, and I would like to be in a position where I can bring information to you freely and speak to her freely, so if she wants to be on the board, that's fine, but I'll step away from it.
Okay.
Not to throw a wet towel on everything here, but there are a few caveats in what we're talking about right here. One is, we have a rule that no resident can serve on more than two boards. Debbie is already on two boards.
Right.
So she'd have to resign from another board. Huh?
I would resign from one, but continue my participation just not as a board member.
Okay, I'm, and then the other thing is, you have to be a resident, a permanent resident. Okay, so that's the, those are two caveats that we instituted on this.
Yep.
So that kind of precludes.
Right.
The two individuals we're talking to, you know, unless other arrangements are made.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yeah, I don't want to change.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, we're talking about two people, but what about the other board members? They would not be able to talk to each other.
As is true with any other advisory board.
Right, so, I mean, I, you know, that's the only purpose is for them to get together to come up with all kind of ideas, and they can't do that at just one meeting, I mean, it's just not something.
Well, no, I don't, I don't, I disagree with you there, because that, every other board operate, your safety board operated that way, and they got, got a ton done. Comp board operates that way, the drainage, they all operate that way, so I think, I think it works. I think it works.
Good.
Yeah.
I think it shows leadership for the town of Southwest Ranches, being at the, at the front line of dealing with zero waste in Broward County.
Right. Hundred percent.
Yeah, it's just a question of how we, how we do this now, you know, we have to find.
So I think what we would do is, if we all agree, and it sounds like this is worth, worth moving, pursuing, going forward with, is then at the next meeting, we would have an item on the agenda, just like we had those other ones for all these other boards, we would now have one for the Zero Waste Advisory Board.
Yeah, the problem I see is populating the board.
We'll have to, we'll see how that goes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, public comment.
Legs went to sleep. Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Number one, not a, call it a zero waste board, but a waste board. Also, I think that our waste hauler needs to be a, a part of this as a consultant or whatever, or advisor to this board.
Right.
And have mandatory attendance, where they know what's happening, and they can make suggestions as to what is the best reasonable way to accomplish the situation within the guidelines that they're being given. And whether or not, because I know that waste management, well, it doesn't have very much to do with zero waste here in South Florida, in other places, they're major, major, zero waste providers. And I know in Pennsylvania they are, out in Nevada they are, and several other places they are also. And that they can give us information, right, cutting-edge stuff that we can use. And also how to educate our populace, because right now, I think they said that thirty or forty percent of the recycles we put in is garbage, and we need to work that down to zero.
Right.
In order to do it. And there's others ways to do it, so I think that they need to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Yeah, I'd like to, I think we have a consensus to have this board on the next.
Do we need to take back our motions in our seconds?
I don't think we did a motion in a second. We didn't do a motion in a second on this.
I thought we did.
No.
Didn't you make a motion? Oh.
No, no.
Must have been the one before, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's all right. It's all right.
Pardon me.
No worries. All right, any other discussion on this item? I think we're good, we've got a recommendation for next meeting. All right, the next item on our agenda is the annual review of the charter officials.
Mayor, as, as tradition has it.
Yep.
We will request that this item be tabled until the January 25th meeting.
Great. Yeah, we've, we've done this every year to let the year run out and give time for a full evaluation. Just so you know, we did, I actually did when we redid the contract here for Russell, I was like, why don't we just move that to January rather than doing this kind of song and dance every year, but it turns out it's in our charter, so we're going to continue to do this song and dance every year, so hope you enjoyed it. Andy Burns.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
The floor is all yours one last time.
Thank you, and I just have one page. So first of all, I'd like to thank you all for the role you played in, in, in last week's retirement party. I appreciated the opportunity to hear what you all had to say and to share some of my thoughts and thanks with you in a, I'll say, less formal setting than sitting here in a council meeting. And I'll say, as nice as the party was, I want to tell you that the highlight to me were the comments that you all made about the performance of Russell and the town staff. That means I've done my job, and the town is ready for this next step forward, so thank you all for that. I also recognize Russell's role in orchestrating the events of the party, and I only have one more response, I'm going, I'm going, stop pushing. So tonight, I'd like, I'd like to share ten things that I won't miss, the one thing I will miss, and I was going to close with a piece of advice for you. So in a shout out to the old David Letterman Show, here's the top ten things that I will no longer miss. Number ten, hurricane season. Number nine, election season. Number eight, illegal parking complaints. Number seven, pothole reports. Number six, party house and noise complaints. Number five, social media nonsense. Don't believe everything you read. Number four, phone calls just as I sit down to dinner, and I know Melissa's not going to miss that either. Number three, weekend calls for illegal fill. Number two, late Thursday nights, and the number one thing I won't miss is the daily eighty-mile round trip. So what I will miss will be the incredible people that I've had the opportunity to get to know during my time here. This was always more than just a job to me, and those relationships that I've built will last a lifetime, so thank you all for that. And now I'm going to leave you with just one piece of advice. If I've had any success here, it's come from one core principle. Everything I've done can be traced to this, this one thing. I worked better the lives of the people around me. The world can be a mess these days, we all need to do whatever we can to make our corner of this world what it should be. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve Southwest Ranches, and from the bottom of my heart, I thank you.
All right, Sparky, you're up next.
Yeah. Definitely not your last time, though, Russell. Many more to come, but go for it.
I took a cue from Andy to be brief, so I got six pages, no. As the incoming town administrator, I'm so very grateful to have been chosen to lead this great town. I thank you, Mayor, and Town Council for having the confidence in me to extend this opportunity. This is the opportunity of a lifetime, and I relish the challenges that lie ahead. I am committed to you all to be accessible, honest, and to communicate consistently while being sensitive to the issues that are important to each of you. Andy, I want to thank you for being a great mentor and friend over the past nine years. Under your leadership, the town has flourished. You have set the example of how to accomplish the stated policy goals of the various town councils you have served, and I will strive to have similar success. I am so happy that you are able to ride off into the sunset on your terms with so much life in front of you. Congratulations on your retirement. To the residents, I pledge to make the time to hear your concerns, to treat you with dignity and respect, and to consider your concerns with honesty and integrity. I will work diligently to ensure that you continue to receive the high level of service from the town employees and contracted vendors that you have come to expect. To the staff, I have such respect for the work that you all do and the contributions you have all made to make our piece of the world special. I want to continue to build on the momentum we have to accomplish the goals previously established. I promise to praise you publicly and celebrate your successes while we work towards improving areas that need improvement. I ask for your patience, your patience in advance, as I will likely make mistakes along the way. This will lead to growth and improvements to our service delivery, and I look forward to celebrating future successes together. I also want to thank my wife and family, and I want to recognize my, my in-laws, my mother-in-law, Maria Mackey, and my father-in-law, Jack Mackey, retired Navy Police Chief, by the way, who are here tonight for their unconditional love and support. Andy, you're not the only one who loves their in-laws. Their past and future sacrifices have allowed me to be here today, and without them, none of my individual successes would be possible. So I want to thank you all for being here tonight, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday season, and look forward to seeing you in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Russell? Hey, Russell, keep your phone on tonight.
Okay.
We are very fortunate for what has occurred in the past, and we're very fortunate for what's coming in the future.
Thank you.
All right, item number 21, approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the minutes of September 14th of this year and September 28th of this year. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none. Public, Noel, go ahead.
Noel Hollingsworth, this is not a correction, and it's a comment. We are looking at ancient history this evening, September. It is two months, and I'd like to see it alleviated to where last month, it would be the month that we're approving this month in the future. I understand Russell had a whole lot on his plate, learning the, the final ropes and going, oh my God, I'm going to be the administrator, and having another Coca-Cola over that one. And Deborah, you are one person short in your department now. Now, we just wanted to let you know that, Steve, you were saying it's replacement of one. It's that you were talking about a different individual, not within the town clerk's office, but the town clerk's office now is short one, which could lead to the minutes being even later than they are now. So in January, I'd like to see October, November, and December finished, and in the future, one month behind on the, on the notes, because right now, I'm taking a look at those notes, I'm looking at history as far as this town is concerned, not something that is, well, can I remember what happened then? No, I can't remember what happened in September. I was reading, and I go, did we do that? Did we do that then? And so, let's work on it, because there's one needed in the clerk's office right now, because one has left, and everyone has moved up one, so we need a new person in the clerk's office. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. Any other public comment? Seeing none, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, Mayor, it's that time to make that motion to adjourn, however, Andy has to stay. Last guy out of the building.
Just a reminder, he's here till 5:00 PM tomorrow.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, yeah. You said you'd have that public safety building for me, so I'm looking, you have a busy day tomorrow, getting that bid completed. All right, thank you all for coming out, really appreciate it. Have a good evening.